Okay.
Okay.
All right. Sounds good. Okay, and we're gonna record. All right, it's seven o'clock. Let's go ahead and open the special meeting. Will. Mr. Will Knight, will you lead us to the prayer?
Sure. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and this opportunity to do this, conduct this business. We pray for our nation. We pray for our leadership. These are troubled times with both now the virus and the civil unrest, but we also pray that there be a proper balance, that we would hate injustice and that we would also appreciate the fine job that many, many police officers do. And so help us to seek out ways in which we can show and express our love for those who feel oppressed as well as supporting our police officers who do such an excellent job of doing their best and putting their lives on the line. So there's a balance and help us to find it. And we pray, Heavenly Father, that you would guide our steps as we attempt to, in these difficult times, to do the business and plan ahead. And we thank you for the help that has been given, for the awards that have been received so far and by those grants that are pending. We pray for wisdom as those are cited upon. And we pray, Heavenly Father, that you continue to help each of us on the board and those of us who are supporting the board, help us with our health and help us to continue to support our families and to show them our love and appreciation for all that you've done. And we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. All right, we got the flag. Let's go. I pledge allegiance to this flag.
To the flag.
United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll call Lindsay.
Okay, so Mr. Crouch is absent currently. Mr. Darius?
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Deal?
Present.
Mr. Erickson?
Present.
Mr. Sinkovitz is currently absent. And Mr. Penner?
Here.
All right, we have no, let me just double check YouTube here real quick, but we have no public comment that was emailed to us. There were no letters in the mailbox, so we should be good to go. And there's nothing on YouTube at this time, but we can check back there at the end. We have three agenda items. The first one is to approve a contract with General Recreation for the installation of the Safety Turf Play surface at the Newville Community Park. The cost is $145,000. The contract shall be effective June 9th, 2020. You'll recall that we have already approved this probably twice, three times maybe. But the county is requiring it to be after, the approval to be after, what was that, May 4th, I think, Fred?
Yes.
So we have to do it now and then they can begin work. Anything else to add to that, Fred?
No, that's all good. It's good.
Okay. Any discussion? Question? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item number two, accept the resignation of Vicki A. Negley as police clerk and authorize the advertisement to hire a new police clerk. I believe Fred received this notification last week and the request that she would like to retire as soon as she can with the understanding that she's willing to stay on and help train a new hire. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Any questions?
Could we do something by way of thanking her for her service?
We are planning to have cake and ice cream and something here at the office, inviting the employees to stop in, the police officers. But we are working on something just to have a little party for her.
Well, I think it'd be nice to have a letter signed by our board president and by the mayor, thanking her for her service, I think.
You know, Lindsay and I talked about, we have a commendation form, a very nice commendation form, and we're going to print one off, and the mayor will sign that and also the council president.
Great. Good idea. Do we need a motion in a second?
I make a motion, we accept her resignation.
Okay, Joey moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
And Bob seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. We need to go back to number one because I just realized that I moved that and seconded it myself and didn't, we just rolled right through it. So I don't want to have to approve this for a fourth time.
I just thought maybe you were going back to one of our other motions from before.
So, so let's make sure we do this right. So we're going to approve the contract with General Recreation for the installation and Safety Turf Play surface at Newville Community Park at the cost of $145,000. Contract shall be effective June 9th, 2020. Do we have a motion?
Amen.
Joey moved it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Bob seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Any abstentions? Right, that motion carries. There we go. Really, really was a motion that time. All right, item number three is to discuss the reopening of Newville Community Park and the Newville Trailhead and to consider allowing the Diller Men and Night Church to resume softball games at the park. So you know, everybody knows that we go green on Friday. When you're under green, it is permissible to open parks and that kind of stuff. So although when they open the parks, they do recommend that we're following CDC guidelines. Some of those CDC guidelines would be daily disinfection of restrooms and playground equipment. Yeah, that's really the big one. Trying to think, we'd also have to consider for opening up the water sprinkler as well because that's there. They also do recommend that, you know, you emphasize social distancing. Younger kids are not recommended to wear a face mask because they're being physically active. And older kids, if they're not being physically active, then they are encouraged to wear a face mask. So.
Would it be appropriate to have some signage outlining these basic ideas?
It could be.
Well, let me just make council aware of some of the facts about the park. Number one, the restrooms are not open to the public daily. They are open for the baseball games and then they are locked. The reason for that is when we have left them open around the clock, even with the cameras, we've had vandalism. We've had the sinks smashed. We've had the toilets filled with rocks. Sanitary lines were blocked. We've just had problems. So the restrooms are not open all the time. What we do in the summertime is we rent a portage on and that's what we have for park visitors. We could rent one with a wash station, a hand sanitizer wash station. They have those now. Regarding the drinking fountain at the park, that does not work. It hasn't operated in years. It was vandalized. Council years ago took it out of service and disconnected. The spray pond that we have, which was built by Jerry Gilbert when he was a councilman, that was once on a timer and it ran according to temperature and also it was on a timer mechanism. We had a lot of complaints about the timer mechanism and we had an electrician install a button. You hit the button and the spray pond comes on. And I know there's concerns about the button and children pressing the button. We could make sure that's disinfected every day or we could go back to the timer. We would have to buy a timer mechanism in order to do that and have it wired in. And that would require an electrician and the cost of the mechanism. So those are just some facts regarding the facilities at the park. As far as hand sanitizer stations, I looked online today. I found a hand sanitizer station for $179. Would probably be best to have at least two at the park. The sanitizer packs come in a box of four and they're $54.95 each. As far as signs, social distancing signs, we had some made up for the trailhead and I believe we had three placed out the trailhead and they were a total of $360. We do not have signs for the wearing of masks, but I think those you can find online, they're relatively inexpensive. So it would be a few hundred dollars for the sanitizer stations. Signage and so forth would be probably around $700 or $800 to do all that. You could just take the spray pond out of service and not use it. Out at the trailhead, I think we already have touchless sink closets. I think they're in operation. I'd have to go out and take a look. I know one of the problems with the touchless facilities out at the trailhead was, you have to have heat in the building all year round or otherwise the mechanisms begin to malfunction and then you have to replace them. Touchless sinks or faucets, rather, the fixtures are $274 each.
How much did you say, Fred?
What's that?
How much did you say?
For the touchless faucets, I looked online, they're a little bit anywhere from $235 to $275.
Okay, thanks.
If you're gonna buy one, the better faucet, the cheaper ones, they just don't last.
Okay.
And I'd be reluctant to tell you what it would cost for the trailhead until I go out and look and see what we have there.
Anything else then, Fred?
No, that's, you know, it's up to council if you want to do this. I would say to get the park ready to go would be around eight, maybe $900. So I guess the next question is, Fred, where's the money coming from?
That's right.
Well, I'm glad you're laughing, Bob. The general fund has a balance right now of $67,000. The water fund has $52,856 and the sewer fund has $21,000. What concerns me today is we received an email from Sue Pinty, who is the executive director of our Capital Tax Bureau in Silver Spring Township. And the bureau is closed. One of their employees has come down with a virus and all the employees must quarantine for two weeks, which means the bureau has closed and we will not receive any tax money. At least probably through maybe mid-July before the bureau would be up again and able to process payments. So we have to prepare for that. The other problem is, as we get into the August, September, October, our revenues really drop off. That is normally our tough time of the year financially. It's even tougher this year. I've asked council to consider making payroll, taking care of insurances and taking care of benefits for the employees. Last week, we received just over $19,000 in earned income tax and all of that went immediately a few days later for payroll. We had a very large payroll last week because we had a $2,500 commission check to process for our tax collector. So having said that, that will be the last of the large commission checks to our tax collector. We will have others, but they will not be that large. So our payroll cost will drop back down to around $17,000. I just, you know, I hate to sound like a broken record and I know I upset people by saying this because it's not happy, good news. But I would rather be here at the end of the year and tell you, you know, by being frugal, we have a fund balance. I would not like to tell you in October that we don't have money to continue. And that's, that's the, that's a long short of it, that we're in a difficult time. Every day you come in, you turn the computer on and what's today's hoop that we're going to jump through? Today's hoop was we found out that our tax bureau is temporarily going to be closed. So where could we do these improvements? Where do we have a little bit of money? We did, council two years ago did set aside some money at Adams County National Bank for some equipment and was used towards the training of an officer last year. We still have set aside from that money, $1,400. That's available down at Adams that we could use it for the park improvements, trailhead improvements if we need to. And that's, that's all I have.
What if there's a need for money for something else down the road?
Well, that's what concerns me, Bob. If, you know, something else comes up, we're going to dip in our general fund. You know, it's not as though we're not going to get any more revenue for the end of the year. We will. We'll have more revenue come in. I've earned income tax revenue come in. But I can't sit here, we're in uncertain times and I can't sit here and tell you, don't worry. Historically, you know, this is what happens because that's all gone. We don't have anything to really fly by historically in terms of the borough. These are, it's a new thing every day, Bob.
It's true for our country, Fred. We're $26 trillion in debt. Last night I had a nightmare that the dollar was falling rapidly and it just wet it waking up. Can you imagine that?
Well, we don't know what's going to happen. You know, the outlook is the fall, the virus is going to be, it's going to come back. I hope it doesn't.
Never less.
You know, I just, I have to deal with what I, what I see here today. I can only tell you as far as today and, you know, I don't know what's going to happen and I'm sorry, I can't. I'm sorry, I can't tell you. But I would just use one word, caution.
Absolutely.
I know you all feel that we have to protect the children at the park and to the extent that we can. I say, you know, let's do what we can with what we have, try to make the best of it. So that's up to council if you, you want to move ahead with, you know, trying to make some of these improvements on a shoestring if we could. But again, I wouldn't invest a lot of money in the restrooms for the simple fact that, you know, they're not open. And you could save quite a bit of money at the park. The trailhead restrooms are used heavily. You know, if you have to spend money, that's where to spend it because they're used very heavily.
Is the cost, Fred, attached to the three venues that we're talking about here? I mean, given that we're sort of constrained, is it worth discussing opening some and not others? Would that save money or do you have to do all the things that you're talking about to open any one of them?
I don't think opening the softball field costs us anything minus maybe the porta potty, but do they pay for that?
No, we do. It's $85, $85 for a portage on and then I don't know what the sink runs.
That's monthly, correct?
Yes.
Would it be appropriate, Fred, to ask those that use the park to contribute a little bit towards the ongoing expenses of keeping the sanitizers, sanitizers going, et cetera, for the events of doing? Would that be appropriate to ask?
You mean ask for donations?
Yes. Yeah.
Well, I guess we could, you know.
I mean, everybody is, everybody's struggling to bring things to some normalcy and if they actually see what they're using it for and that their people are benefiting by it, it seems to me appropriate.
Yeah, well, it might be worth considering. I'm not sure it would raise much money. So you'd have to be prepared to bear the full cost ourselves, even if we asked for contributions because we're probably not going to get a lot.
Well, you know, there's another option that we could try to get this claimed under our Pima request. Just so you understand, we wouldn't be submitting that. The deadline for that is September. So we will be submitting our claim in August and then it'll go through a review and you won't see the money much before maybe October, November. So you would have to front the money for now and then have it come back in on October, November. Hopefully they would see fit to reimburse us for it.
My biggest concern is that we at least do a daily disinfect of the playground equipment.
You know, that, that we buy the chemicals and the ingredients for that. We buy that and do it ourselves, mix it ourselves. We've already bought the sprayers and so we have that equipment. My only concern is, you know, with our staff, we only have two guys and a part-time fellow doing mowing. And, you know, it's, it's gonna get tight here when we start working at the park because part of our agreement with General Recreation is that we're going to haul all the wood carpet out. We're going to have to provide two trucks and two drivers and there'll be several days down there just working on that. So that'll be coming up soon and we can't have the guys down there working and then doing all the other things. So it's like I said before, you know.
What is that project gonna start? Because that's gonna close the park back down.
Well, everything is now submitted. General Recreation submitted all of their documents to the redevelopment authority. Tomorrow I will send a letter advising that the contract date has been changed. And with that, I think everything should be ready to go. We should be able to get a notice to proceed, so. It's at that point a matter of time till the down payment money is received by General Recreation. As soon as they have that in hand, they're going to start. It's probably about three weeks worth of work if the weather is nice. If we have bad weather, that'll delay and cause more time, but you're looking about three weeks.
So Frank, could you just give us the numbers again? What, what basically the monthly cost of this is?
Monthly cost of?
Well, the whole thing you're talking, all the costs you're talking about, what does that amount to? Was that a total cost? Was that a monthly cost?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
It's a thousand dollars, isn't it, Fred? Thousand dollars?
What's, I'm lost. Sorry. Yeah, it was like $700 to make all of those fixes plus $85 a month for the, for the portage.
$85 is the rental of the restroom. The sanitizer stations are 179 each. The sanitizer refill packs are $54.95 each. Signage, probably another $300. You're looking about $800 or $900 for the expenses at the park.
Okay.
That's a month.
That's just, so that's the opening costs and that's.
That would be, that would be one time and done, Jeff.
Yeah, okay. And then the $85 a month is per month.
Probably the hand sanitizer refill. I can see kids going down there and just holding their hand on sanitizer and letting it run, but, you know.
I don't think we would need, if we're going to have the porta potty that has a hand sanitizer for over, close to the playground equipment, I don't think we need more than one. I don't think we would have to buy multiple because with, with the porta potty, that would give us two.
Well, we could put the other one out at the entrance to the restrooms out at the trailhead and just have one there in that common area rather than buying two for the restroom. But that will, you know, you're gonna refill that every week.
Yeah. Is that expensive to refill or?
Well, four packs run $54.95, so, you know, assuming you could get a month out of a pack, why then it would be about $54 a month.
Right.
I don't know. We, we don't have any, we've never had them, so I can't tell you. I would say between the two locations, the trailhead would have the most use.
Probably right.
But the thing with the trailhead is there's a bathroom right there. People can wash their hands. Like, I'm not, I'm not too concerned about a hand sanitizer there because, you know, they can go into the bathroom and wash their hands. That's just as good as hand sanitizer, actually better, so.
And for the porta, John, if we have the wash station there, do we provide the sanitizer for that or?
No, I think they, they come up, that's part of their service. They take care of everything.
Okay, thanks.
And I mean, my thought is if we have a bad porta potty on there with a hand sanitizer in it, it's, it's available. Let them use it and, you know. I don't, I don't know what else.
So if I'm hearing you, one sanitizer for the park, one box of refills, signage, and that would be it for the park?
I don't, what's, what's, what's the signage gonna do?
But yeah, because they don't follow the signs that are down there now saying park's closed.
Right.
These were the social distancing sign.
Yeah. Well, I think it's a matter of, it's a, it's a basic form of trying to cover our tails by saying that people were warned and they, it's a park at their own risk and we're told what was necessary.
More like a liability.
Yeah.
Well, you have two entrances to the park. Why don't you just get two signs and put those at the park? If you want to have anything up at all, just put two signs up and be done with it.
Yeah, I think we need to do that. The reasons Marcus mentions and some people might actually pay attention to it.
And do you, do you feel we still need a hand sanitizer even though there's gonna be one in the porta potty?
At the park?
Yeah.
No, I would say if we have, if they, if they can accommodate us with that request, no.
So I, like, my thought is at the, at the park, use the restroom for a hand sanitizer and at the trailhead, the bathrooms are open, so they can go into the bathrooms and wash their hands.
Right.
We don't, we don't need hand sanitizer there.
I mean, in the restrooms at the park because they're, they're restricted, we couldn't put bottles of hand sanitizer from down at Sailor's, you know, we can do that with soap. That's, that's inexpensive.
They'll walk away.
I think that would be a reasonable compromise to just sort of scale it down. I mean, it would be nice to have these sites open. Now that we're moving to green, I mean, I guess I'm sure we're all concerned that this is, you know, a false or a lull in the longer episode of what's gonna happen here, but you know, there are some services that we probably ought to be providing for folks here if we can do it at a reasonable cost. And it sounds like, you know, maybe we can do, do it on a scaled down basis like that.
I would say that you could always add a sanitizer later in the summer, but it looks like the bathroom sanitizer has always run out. The bathroom sanitizer has always run out.
Moving on to the softball, the softball part, Fred, do they provide us with a certificate of insurance?
Oh, yes, they do, and all the teams that play do.
Okay. Do you think those would have COVID coverage?
Well, there, there's not a special rider for it now, as, as you know from our workers' comp. And this is one of the things that drove our cost up. The, the virus is now a eligible workers' comp claim. It's a, an illness that's eligible for workers' comp, so. They have to provide us with insurance certificates for liability and so forth. The problem is all those insurance certificates were issued Scott at the, in March and April. When the virus was really new and I, I don't think that any of them, I know none of them have specific language saying COVID nineteen coverage.
Since the insurance companies have no experience yet with claims, I think it's impossible to get it right at the moment.
Well, let me put it this way, you have it, the Borough of Newville has it, we know we have it.
Right.
So in, in terms of the park, you know, with our employees and so forth, they would be covered, but. You know, as far as residents and kids going into the park. I, yeah, I'd have to go, if, if you want the coverage, I'd have to go back and check with our insurance company to see if they can provide it.
Well, I, my concern wasn't about us covering them. My concern was that they should be covering their own players.
Right.
Yeah, that's where I was coming from with it.
They'd have to assume all the risk on this and, and show that they can.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'd have to look at the insurance certificates. I don't think they have to provide workers' comp. I think it's all general liability.
But I'm not sure if someone gets sick on their softball team. I don't, I don't know that they can blame the borough for that. It's probably the game of softball that's doing it.
Well, how, how, they would have to show for workers' comp, they would have to show that they contracted the virus at our facility. And that's going to be difficult to do that.
How would they make a workers' comp claim because they're playing baseball at a?
That's, that's exactly right, Jack. That's why I, I say I don't think they've ever been required to give workers' comp. Other than for sur- insurance purposes, they give us a general liability certificate. We're covered for liability purposes, but I don't, I don't see how we would be covered for workers' comp. But I don't wanna say for sure. I, I'd like to go downstairs and pull an insurance certificate or two and check them and see what was covered.
I mean, we'd only have a workers' comp liability if it was one of our workers who was.
That's correct.
Working at the park or something.
And we have that coverage. That's, you're exactly right. We have that coverage in place now as of June first.
So I'm not aware of how they would make a claim for workers' comp. At a recreation, recreational facility where they're basically playing.
I, I would agree. That's gonna be difficult.
Uh, but we do wanna make sure that we've got, that they've got significant liability coverage and they're assuming the risk. Of that and they will keep us and they will hold us harmless. I mean, they have.
They, they have always been very good about providing those certificates and we've always had them very early in the year. Uh, because actually their games in a good year, normal year would start in April and continue through August. So we've always had those in a timely manner.
Now, be, since they're a private organization, maybe we don't need to get into this, but I know that, um. You know, like some of the stuff that we're doing at schools will be, uh, every day. There's three or four questions that are asked and then there's a temperature check of anybody that's participating in an activity. You know, do you wanna require them to do that? Again, I, I don't feel like we're liable for it. Because that's, you know, they're providing their own insurance.
I think we could ask the question, if they're playing games, it's under the governor's. Guidance for sporting activities and I imagine that's addressed in some fashion.
Well, let's talk about this. Let's talk about the fact that, you know, we've ended our summer program. We did not get a license from the Department of Ag to open our concession stand and we won't be opening our concession stand. So yesterday, when I talked to Kevin Yost, I told him that. To the extent that you want to serve refreshments or hot dogs, if you wanna bring a gas grill in. And a cooler and sell those things as part of your league, then you can do that and follow whatever guidelines there may be. If they're selling food and so forth, maybe that's something we want to ask them to do. As a precaution. But we will not be engaged in the selling of food or anything at the park. And I should point out that there might be a possibility that the. Faith and Fun in Our Park program returns on Fridays. I know there is funding for that program. The Borough gave a five hundred dollar donation and other churches came in with money as well. But I've not heard from Pastor Fail or Chris Fail or whether or not they're going to have that program this year.
Well, I know they were supposed to have a meeting on that and I, I wasn't able to go, so I don't know. What came up with that either.
He, he did email me. They have locations at the, at the Legion Pavilion. For the first two Fridays. Because he was asking if we knew when the park was opening and I said, said to him, well, now that, now that we're going green, we can discuss it. So he was interested in coming back possibly that first weekend in July or that first Friday in July. And, but I, I believe they also have some protocol that they need to follow, which is very similar to the temperature checks and. Those kinds of things. You know, anybody that's running a preschool needs to follow those protocols as well.
I know we do in our office.
Yeah.
Maybe it's best to say, just give a letter to these organizations that would be using the park and say. You have our permission, the Borough Council's permission to use the park, but follow the CDC guidelines and that's your responsibility to. Yeah, research those guidelines and to follow them.
I would probably wanna encourage them to make sure that they keep their documentation too.
Would that be helpful, Marcus, do you think?
Yes.
All right, so where do you wanna go with this?
You're talking about just the. Just the.
I think.
Go ahead.
How about, how about a couple different motions, Scott? Number one, to reopen all the facilities. A second motion to appropriate a sum not to exceed, make the improvements at the park. And then authorize the third motion, which would be a letter to the organizations. Giving them permission and requesting them to follow CDC guidelines and also to make documentation.
And I would recommend that we pull the money out of that capital reserve fund. Because if we do get reimbursed for it, you know, it's just, it's money that's sitting there. There's only fourteen hundred dollars in the account anyways. You're not gonna exceed that. You know. It, it was just gonna sit there all year anyhow, so.
Right.
If we can take it from there and then just reimburse it once money comes back.
Then we would not be touching our general fund and that would be good.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so the first motion, we're looking for us to open up the Newville Community Park, the Trailhead Park and the softball field.
This is gonna be, are these competing motions or are these motions that we can?
The, they're gonna kind of be consecutive here, so.
Okay.
Uh, let's handle this one first and then we can tackle the next two. And we would add the, we would add Friday as this, as the opening date.
I have a question though. Are we gonna limit, change the hours at all that the park is open? I mean, I was just, I was just thinking about the disinfecting of the equipment.
I, I. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't change the hours. I don't know. Probably early morning is probably the best time to disinfect because kids aren't.
That's when they would go. The, the men would go down in the morning and then they can go on and do their work for the day, so. I would say they would be down there between seven and seven thirty.
So then you're only gonna disinfect it once a day?
Yeah.
Well, that, that's up to council now. Here's something to think about. If, if you want it once a day, that means. On the weekends, we're going to have to bring someone in and that's gonna be overtime. And it gets a little hard for me on the weekends because Rob Bellinger has a, a business. Out in Upper Frankfurt, he has a store and he and his wife run that store on the weekend. So that leaves me with only Dave every, you know, he's gonna have to do that every weekend.
See, CDC's minimum recommendation was one time a day. They prefer more, more times, but one time is the minimum.
Okay.
So if we're observing the guideline, that gives us some legal recourse.
Are there any exceptions to that? Say, for example, we can do it five days a week?
Nope.
You expect it to be heavier usage?
Yeah.
Well, you know.
I mean, if somebody shows me how to do it, I'll, I'll get out and spray it, but somebody's gotta mix up the chemicals. I'll blow, I'll blow the tank up.
If we have to do it, we'll have to do it. I mean, but I just want to make, to make everyone aware, you know. Situation, so.
Right.
Let's, let's try to do it daily, first thing in the morning. And if time permits in the afternoon, if we can do it in the afternoon, we will come through and do a second cleaning in the afternoon. But for now, we will do one treatment per day.
One in the morning, right?
Yes.
Seven days a week?
Yes.
With Rob Bellinger, right? Gone.
Well, you know, and, and I don't know, Rob may say, hey, I'll go over in the morning before I open the store. I don't know. I'll have to talk to the men and. We'll have to get a game plan together. And if we can't do it, Scott, then we'll call on volunteers.
All right, so we need a motion. To open those three facilities starting on Friday. Is this indefinite now or is it for a few months until we go from green or something?
I would say it's as long as we're in green unless we go back to yellow. If we go back to yellow, they should be closed.
Yes.
Right.
Well, so moved.
Okay, so it's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next motion would be to approve, how much Fred? Five hundred? Do we even need that much?
You know, five hundred, I think would be enough.
So approve up to five hundred dollars to come out of the capital reserve fund to. To, what do I say? Supply needed materials for park reopening.
How about we just term it safety improvement?
Safety improvements. There we go.
I'm it.
Been moved?
Second.
Seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Uh, third one would be to permit the Diller Mennonite. Church softball league to begin using the softball field effective Friday. What would that date be? June?
June twelfth.
June twelfth, beginning Friday, June twelfth, pending. That they've come, you know, turned in certificate of insurance. Is that about right?
That's correct.
I, I understand that there is a little league team or.
Yeah.
Little league or softball team that is going to be using that field also.
My understanding was that they've moved, I thought, I thought Kevin said that they moved. And are no longer gonna use that because their league disbanded or the, they, their summer program was ended or something.
Uh, they just brought their pitching mound.
Yeah.
Over and have it stored in the shed.
Well, we would need to have their certificate of insurance as well.
They will be in on Sunday playing, Kevin told me. They will play their first game on Sunday.
This is a little league team associated with the church?
No, I think, I think it's a traveling team, a youth travel team for softball.
Do we need to let them do this? I mean, are they our kids or are they somebody else's kids?
They're our kids.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're, they're mostly our kids.
I see. They're just not a travel team.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we'd need the same sort of insurance coverage and.
Right.
Why don't we also include in the motion, Scott, that they follow the CDC guidelines?
Okay, and that, okay, we'll follow the CDC guidelines, so. So the motion reads that Diller Mennonite Church and other youth travel teams. Will be permitted to use the softball field starting June twelfth. Pending issues of insurance or certificates of insurance and. Requiring them to follow CDC guidelines.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved.
I have a question. I'm, I'm back on this disinfectant thing with the, them playing ball. Who's gonna disinfect the bleachers and, you know, all those things?
Those, those, those aren't things that they typically would disinfect. Because they're outside. Playground, they disinfect because hand-to-mouth kind of things. That kind, those things, but bleachers typically aren't required to be disinfected.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm just, you know.
No, that's okay. I've been getting my fair share of education on this lately.
Yeah, well, I just don't want, you know, I don't know, so that's why I'm asking. I just know. That things need to be done properly and I wanna make sure that that's gonna happen and, you know. So I won't ask any more questions. I'm done.
Okay.
I have a question on, on the CDC guidelines on, on this issue. Do they tackle any of these things about where you sit and bleachers and what have you or not?
Uh, they encourage social distancing for people who are outside of the same family or same household, I should say.
Right.
And obviously, face mask would be encouraged as well. But if you're outside and you're, you're nowhere near anybody else, it's, it's not a. It's not a big deal. So we had a move. It's been moved. We need, okay, Joey seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, that's all the business that I had on the agenda and I don't see any. Any questions, no comments on YouTube, so we're good to go there. Anything else for the good of the order before we adjourn?
Have, have we advertised, have we authorized advertising for the new clerk?
No.
That was in the motion.
Yeah, it will be done now. It could not. Yeah, it will be done now. It could not be done until her resignation was accepted.
Okay, but that, we included that in the motion to advertise the new one?
Yeah, and now we will advertise. Yep. Scott, I, I have a question. If I'm going to prepare for upcoming meetings, and I understand that, you know, we will be moving down to the Maintenance Building. I, I'm assuming we're moving there. I sent you over the weekend a, a plan to lay out the meeting room and to maintain social distance. Is this what council is going to do? Are we going to move to the Maintenance Building or? Because in a few weeks, I have to get everything ready for us to do this.
There was some discussion about doing an outdoor meeting too, right?
Well, the problem with the outdoor meeting, Jack, is right now we started at seven o'clock, and this is a special meeting. And we're about 15, 20 minutes from darkness. Down at the park, we don't have any lights under our pavilion. So it might be a challenge to us to have our meetings there unless we started at 6:00 PM. We could do that. Then the other problem is you run into inclement weather and so forth.
The, the space under the pavilion doesn't provide for social distancing anyhow.
No.
You, you need an area, I, I had, I had graphed this off, and you need an area about 26 by 20, maybe 30 feet in order to do this. And it would require us to, require the council members to sit at two members to an eight-foot table. And would require us to have five tables and an accommodation, a table for Lindsay. And then we would provide for seating for 10 visitors, and those spaces would be marked. And the reason I like to do this, I like to lay this out with a maintenance crew and paint markings on the floor so that when we set up every month, it's uniform. And we can tell people, give people an assurance that, you know, we've measured and tried to follow distancing as best we can. So I'm just looking for some guidance. Where, where do you want to meet?
Well, the options are the Maintenance Building or your offices. Is that what you're, that we're talking about?
Well, you know, the Borough Office downstairs, we, we would really have to move out a lot of chairs. We would have to, you know, bring tables in. And it, it would be very cramped to use the Borough Office.
Yeah, I mean, I was, unless there's a, a third place, I, I think the only thing we could do is use the Maintenance Building, right?
Well, the only other option would the only other option would be to rent space from either a, a church or the fire hall.
Well, you know, if we have adequate, adequate space in the Maintenance Building, maybe we should do that so we don't have to pay for it.
Well, we have, we have adequate space. We have parking. There's lighting available. If it's a nice summer night, you can open the doors, and it would be just as though you were sitting at the park, except you would have a backhoe behind you, so. Park is, or the, what's that?
I said, we might need to use it.
Well, the Maintenance Building has been used. The Water and Sewer Authority's had three meetings there now, and it works out okay for us. We have had daytime and evening meetings.
Yeah, I would, I would say that, you know, with your layout, it's, it's very doable. There's definitely distance between everybody, and if we needed to open the doors and overflow out, we get more than 10 visitors, then we could do that. I don't know what the square footage of that place is, but, you know, it looks like your layout, your scale.
Yeah, it, we have more than enough adequate space. The other thing I wanted to make mention from the Pennsylvania Township Supervisors Magazine, there was an extensive article this month. And I'll just read, "The Supervisors Will Be Able To Continue To Participate Remotely If They Need To Or Want To Do So." "In addition, Townships May Choose To Offer Virtual Participation Options To The Public." So we can still continue.
But the problem is that we don't have internet access in the Maintenance Building.
No, but the, the point I'm making is, and, and I, I think, I, I'm just saying this for clarification purposes. Even though we go to the green zone, Act 15 still is in effect, and Marcus, you correct me if I'm wrong, please. The, you, the Borough Council can still meet in these virtual meetings. Just because you've moved to the green zone does not mean that you have to go back in having meetings in person at a location. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I, 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 I'm sorry. I thought you were going to say about, like, some could do it virtually and others could be at the meeting.
Oh, no.
We technologically, I don't think, can swing that there. We could possibly do it in the Borough Office, but we can't, we can't do it in the Maintenance Building.
No, i- i- it's just there, there have been a lot of discussions with municipalities, people calling and asking, what are you doing in Newville? And many feel that, you know, they would still like to have the virtual meetings, citizens can participate. Some are still going to do it. Some are going back to the in-person meeting.
Yeah, well, I guess, given the option, I prefer to do virtual meetings, honestly, but I think, maybe in green, but that doesn't mean people can't get sick, and I, I do think we're probably going to see some things start happening later in the year, so, anyway, that would be my preference.
We're still losing 1,000 people a day to this virus, dead, and we've just quit talking about it. For whatever reason.
Yeah.
It's going to get a lot worse in the fall when we have the flu plus the virus. It could be very deadly.
If you can't see how this hit close to home today with one of the members of our Tax Bureau in Silver Spring Township becoming infected and shutting down the entire Bureau. That stopped our money. If that doesn't make you stop and say, this is real, it is happening, people are getting sick, it's not getting better. The virus is still out there. Just because we moved to the greens, it doesn't mean we're all under some magic umbrella that we're going to be safe and well.
It's, I agree, I agree.
So that's why I bring that up to you, so you know that you have that option. Because I think many municipalities feel that they can't do it anymore. And Act 15 gives you, the Borough Council, the right to decide whether you want to meet in person or have virtual meetings.
I think these.
I was going to say, I think. Anything I said was wrong?
No, it's not wrong. I think I would, I would counsel continuing the virtual meetings to see how the virus is, is proceeding that way. I think people are just a little more comfortable by doing it. We do have opportunities for community participation this way. And it is going to take a lot of work to get the the garage set up for our size body and having visitors, so. You know, i- if, if it turns out that there's no uptick in the number of illnesses in two or three months, and things are getting better, not worse, we can rethink it.
One, one thing that we could offer to do in the virtual setting is if somebody communicates that they have a public comment that they would like to make, we can invite them into the Zoom session and let them make their public comment. That kind of stuff, rather than, you know, reading letters and that kind of stuff. So, you know, we could do that. I hesitate to open up Zoom meeting to anybody in the world because we all know what happens, what happens then. But, you know, like, if, you know, Pete Smith wants to, wants to address the council, we could give him the information for the Zoom meeting, and he could hop on, give his public comment. And, you know, if, if he wanted to leave the, the meeting at that time, he could, or we can mute him and, and go on. So that's, that's a possibility.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea if, and we can make it try it, and if it turns out to be a circus, then we go back, go to something else. But I, I think would address the major concern that people have about continuing these virtual meetings that people don't have a chance to comment, except, you know, remote means that are delayed in response. So if we can actually get people into the conference and the conversation, then I think that, you know, that makes it worthwhile, I think.
Yeah. I mean, what we can't do is we can't let virtual meetings be a reason that we can't do business. And, you know, you, we've got to continue to do business, just like if we were meeting in person. And, you know, if it means in August, we have to address the rental issue virtually, then so be it. We just, you, you, we just can't stop doing business because we're meeting, we're meeting virtually.
Right. Agreed.
Is this part of new reality, virtual meetings and virtual this and what have you? It may well be the new norm.
I, I think it's going to be a, a, definitely a new tool.
Yep.
So.
And it's not forever, so.
Hopefully not.
Hopefully not, but we don't know.
So what I'm hearing is that you would rather just continue with this?
Under the circumstances, I would say yes. Let's continue with the virtual meetings.
I would agree with that.
I agree.
Do you still want, do you want to offer as a fourth option for people that if they want to participate in the Zoom meeting, they have to provide us with their email address?
Yes.
Okay.
Not everyone has email address, though. I don't know.
Well, then, that's the only, well, email address or phone number.
Or phone number.
Because they could phone in.
Or written responses or written.
Correct. We, we, we would still do those things. This would just be an added, this would ju- just be a fourth way that, you know. I, I don't ever want to be accused of not being transparent, because I think we've been extremely transparent through this process. And I, you know, that's not my goal. My goal is to keep the, keep business moving and if we, you know, and giving people a voice as much as possible, so.
That's a good idea. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Give you direction, Fred? Anything else?
Just, just two comments. Officer Gutsho has, has started the training with the dog. It, it started yesterday, and June 15th, which is next Monday, Chief Kosher will be back on the schedule.
Oh, he'll be back. He's going to be well.
All right. So much for a switch meeting.
Yeah. It's an hour. It's not bad.
Yeah.
All right. Well, let's have a motion to adjourn unless you guys really want to stick around for something longer here.
No. I had church council last night that went for three hours, so no.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Everybody have a great night. Hopefully, we'll see you sometime soon.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.